Hello, 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 hello.
Your mic works.
Hey, Rap.
Yes, yes.
Thanks for getting those guys to come out and reseed.
Yeah, no problem. They did a good job, I'm assuming. We'll see in a couple of months.
It's a little light, let's just put it that way.
We'll see.
How it comes in. And it looks like they sodded some places.
Yeah, I'll follow up with the guys tomorrow morning.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just gonna bring it up in my ward report.
Sure, sure.
You know, that you, you know, it's currently underway.
Yeah, all the projects are coming to an end. It feels kinda good.
So that should, that should quiet some of the
Yeah.
You know, minor uproar.
I understand that.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna give it about another minute. Well, it looks like we have everybody in from the waiting room. Want to say happy first day of fall, everyone. That happened today. It's, what was it, 8:36 this morning? It was officially fall today on the 22nd. And here we are, oh, about 11 hours later, it's 7:30. And it's September 22nd. I'd like to call this city council meeting to order. And so with that, would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, at this time, if the council can go ahead and unmute and give a moment for Judy, the clerk, to call roll.
Cannon.
Here.
Budmets.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Veneziano.
Here.
Sessi.
Here.
Yastis.
Present.
Sanica.
Here.
With seven present and nobody absent, there is a quorum this evening. Therefore, members of the audience who are attending this virtual call and those sitting in in city council chambers should be reminded that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable channel as well as other media outlets. As we know from doing this for so long, that public comment will be afforded to the public who are joining us on the conference line as long as they've provided their contact credentials and the subject matter for which they would like to speak about before the deadline is noted on top of tonight's agenda. Members of the public who might happen to be present in city council chambers listening to the meeting, you will also be afforded the opportunity to provide public comment in accordance with the procedures that are applicable to public comment at an in-person meeting of the city council. Namely, that means if you arrived by the start of the meeting and at least before and signed in before I called the meeting to order. Of course, any written comments that are submitted in advance, they will be read during the public comment segment. So given that small list of housekeeping items, we can now jump into the agenda as it stands. And the first order of business is to approve minutes from the previous meeting, which was September 8th, 2020, city council meeting. So with that, I'd like to look for a hand or a motion to approve these minutes as well as a second. Thank you, Alderman Veneziano for the first and thank you, Alderman Sanica for the second. Are there a show of hand? Any corrections, additions, or deletions to these minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmets.
I abstain as I was not present.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Sessi.
Yes.
Yastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
With six in favor, none opposed, and one abstention, those minutes are approved. Let's now bring this down to the next portion, which is something we haven't done yet doing these virtual, hosting these virtual meetings. And that's looking for a motion to deviate. I need this motion to deviate because we do have two public hearings. The first is the library tax levy and the second is the city tax levy. Is there an alderman willing to make that motion to deviate? Thank you, Alderman Budmets, and thank you for the second, Alderman Sanica. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will now deviate from the agenda. And we will discuss the first item, which is the public hearing for the library tax levy. The city council is scheduled to hold a public hearing on the library tax levy. The purpose of hearing is to invite oral comments for interested citizens concerning the library tax levy. Let the record show that the public hearing has opened at 7:35 PM on September 22nd, 2020. At this time, I'd like to ask if there is anyone that wishes to speak regarding the library tax levy. If you do and you are here for that on this particular call, please use the raise hand feature and I will unmute you or you can press star 6 to unmute. Attorney Wolf, I see your hand is up. There's something you may need.
Yes, Mayor, just a technicality. I believe we had a motion and a second on the motion to deviate. Do we need to take a vote on that motion just to formalize the approval?
Yeah, yeah, I'm so sorry. So should I suspend the time that we open this public hearing and do that and take the vote?
Yeah, that's fine.
Whoops. All right, so I'm suspending this at 7:36. And since we have the motion, the first and the second, will the clerk please call the roll? I'm sorry.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Sessi.
Yes.
Yastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
With seven in favor and an opposed, we are opening the floor with the motion to deviates. And again, this is a new one for us, a new experience on the virtual call. My bad. So resuming at 7:36 at this time for the public hearing for anyone who wishes to discuss the library tax levy. Attorney Wolf, is your hand up from legacy reasons or is there something more? Good, good news. Thank you. And as I allow for time for folks, if anyone is interested to speak on the purpose of the library tax levy. Okay, since it doesn't look like there's anybody here this evening to speak on behalf of the library tax levy, let the record show that the public hearing closed at 7:37 on September 22nd, 2020. The next public hearing that we have is for the city tax levy. The city council is scheduled to hold a public hearing on the city tax levy. The purpose of this hearing is to invite oral comments from interested citizens concerning the city tax levy. Let the record show that the public hearing is now open at 7:38 PM on September 22nd, 2020. Is there anyone that wishes to speak regarding the library tax levy? Please use the raise your hand feature and I'll call on you to unmute or use star 6 to unmute if calling on the phone. Alderman Bessisi, I will get to your question in a moment. The floor is open for interested citizens to speak on behalf of the library tax unless that's something you're gonna speak on as a citizen.
I thought we were open for the city's tax levy.
The city, excuse me, I'm on the city tax levy. I was looking up above.
That's all I had to say.
You think I've been on to this for a month? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak regarding the city tax levy? Well, then let the record show that the public hearing is closed at 7:39 PM on September 22nd. Now, since those two items are done, I do have to ask for a motion to close the floor. And since we are doing these virtual meetings, I will need a roll call vote after that motion. Is there a motion to close the floor? Thank you, Alderman Budmets, and thank you for the second, Alderman Veneziano. Is there any discussion to close the floor? If not, will the clerk please call the roll?
Veneziano.
Yes.
Sessi.
Yes.
Yastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With seven in favor and an opposed, we now close the floor and resume with our regularly scheduled agenda, which brings us down to the mayor's report. Two quick items to report on because we won't be in in council meetings in between now and then. There's a new business, an HVAC business called Phoenix Heating and Air. They will be having a ribbon cutting on October 1st in the Industrial Avenue. And it's nice to see that in these times in this COVID pandemic economic climate that we still have businesses opening in the city of Rolling Meadows. And so that's reassuring. Again, that ribbon cutting will be on October 1st at 4:30. And on October 2nd, we actually have the grand opening celebration slash ribbon cutting for Taco Yares, which is on 1410 Gulf Road. That event is also gonna be on October 2nd from 4 to 5 PM. And so members of the council are absolutely encouraged to attend either one or both of these to show your support in this endeavor. That's pretty much it for me for the mayor's report. Are there any ward reports this evening? This is good. Alderman Budmets.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several items. First thing, I received a call from a resident and given the current COVID-19 policy not to collect trash unless it's in a sealed bag, he says that when animals unseal the bags overnight, that it tends to have an effect where trash gets strewn across the lawns. And because Public Works is not picking that trash up for safety reasons, he's wondering if now is the time for us as a council to once again consider the provision of trash containers or bins like other, like other municipalities have, unless, of course, we anticipate the COVID policy to change at some point in the near future. And for those instances where trash does get strewn, that we'll be able to have it addressed, the major components addressed by Public Works. So that's item number one for consideration. Item number two, I received a call from a resident about an Airbnb that's operating on his block. He said that initially, the public or community development told him that it's legal to have a Airbnb and that it wasn't a problem. Then I received a second call from him saying that, you know, that he didn't feel like community development had adequately addressed his issue. So I called Community Development or got in touch with Rob and they told me that it's not legal. So I'm trying to figure out, is it legal or not to have an Airbnb in Rolling Meadows? And I'm assuming the answer is yes, assuming they're properly licensed and that this person on this street would need to get a license if they're gonna continue to operate in Airbnb and all of the requirements that are necessary to rent your property or to have a rental property in Rolling Meadows. But I wanted to make sure that it was at least addressed that we should have some kind of a standard answer, either yes or no to Airbnb's. Number three, a Hoover constituent on Hoover contacted me about lights that were newly installed in the, in the Kingswalk parking lot for security purposes are invading his privacy purposes in his own backyard, that his, his backyard is now lit up like a parking lot. And so I'm looking to see what community development can do to some kind of broker, some kind of piece so that this man gets the privacy back in his backyard and the, the parking lot is safe for the residents of, of Kingswalk. And I'm happy to participate in that if, if it's necessary. But that's item number three. Item number four, it's been a big week for me. A resident dropped off a broken bolt from the bridge over Kirchhoff from Route 53. I sent an email to staff letting them know, hey, this isn't cool. And it's already been rated the worst bridge in Illinois prior to this, prior to repairs being done. And I've been told that the project's been put on hold due to the shortage of lumber in the state of Illinois and that that's why the bridge has not been worked on so far this year. But given the fact that I have a really nice big, large bolt on my desk that is broken, I'm really concerned that we need to put some kind of pressure on the iDOT to get moving on this project and to dig a little deeper in their pockets and find some lumber to make the Kirchhoff, the bridge over Kirchhoff from Route 53 safe for our residents who walk underneath it. So those are my four items. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alderman Budmets. I would recommend or I would like you to bring up the first point about the waste management and matters on the agenda. I'd like to put Director Horn a little bit in the hot seat. He and I had had previous conversations about this. I understand that a certain portion of our garbage trucks are already outfitted with the components for the retractors to pick up those bins. I discussed this with him. It started when residents were complaining about chickens and potential varmint. And I think we attract a lot of that varmint, coyotes, raccoons, et cetera, from having easily open garbage containers. There's a lot of other financial value and workers' comp-related physical strain reduction for our employees as well. So I would encourage you to bring that up so we can put Director Horn on the hot seat just a little bit so we can help us understand that more. But thank you. Alderman Sanica.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a resident reach out and the resident stated two essential things. They were, they had explained that they had been dining in Arlington Heights and said that they really liked the Arlington Heights alfresco idea that had been executed in that area and was looking for more of a long, of more of a, of a response from the city of Blowing Meadows to promote our restaurants. And the resident also said that some of the restaurants that do have outdoor seating, the resident noted that the, that staff don't always necessarily adhere or staff or patrons don't necessarily adhere to the mask requirements. So I pointed the resident to our special meeting on June 3rd regarding outdoor seating and the adjustments that we've made so far and, and linked the resident to that, to that YouTube link so that the resident could see it. And I noted that the resident could contact the Cook County Department of Public Health regarding any types of potential mask issues or any, any perceived violations of mask requirements at these public areas. And there was no additional course of action for that. That was just the types of interactions that we had had in the past week or so. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sanica. Alderman Cannon, I believe your hand was up next and then Alderman Bessisi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I wanted to remind the rest of the council that earlier this summer, we approved some additional equipment.
I think we lost the audio, Alderman Cannon.
He's there. He said he, on behalf of the rest of the residents, was very happy. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. I don't believe we were able to catch that whole thing, but it sounded like it was a good compliment. You're more than welcome to try again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, this, this resident was just very happy with the way we patched the roadway in there. It's, they're very impressive patches. It's much different than just throwing a couple shovels of asphalt in there. So it's really was a nice, it was a very nice job and he was very complimentary of our, our people out there, especially the foreman and that crew. Thanks.
Thank you. It's good to hear kind words, right? So often we get the complaints. Alderman Bessisi.
Yes, actually, this is also partially a compliment. I've heard from several residents in the ward. They're very happy with the, with the new roads that were put in and you know, and how that's all worked out and everything. The only minor issue that had come up was the seating in the parkways and/or sod was very, very poorly done. I do appreciate that today that Public Works got the contractor to go ahead and redo all that work and plant and plant seed and go through it again. And I believe, Rob, that was no cost to the city. It was basically just, it did not meet our expectations. So that project should be completed, I would assume, tomorrow. So I just wanted to, you know, thank Public Works for jumping on that right away and getting the contractor to fix the work. Thank you.
Thanks, Alderman Bessisi. Alderman O'Brien.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and I'm not gonna take much time on this. I had a similar conversation. It sounds like what you had with Director Horn and Alderman Budmets too. Couple residents had reached out regarding the trash collection and wildlife getting in. So there was some concerns from our side. Two, most recently is when I met with Director Horn, Assistant Director Charlton last Thursday. So I did have similar inquiries as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thanks. Alderman Veneziano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I too, I guess our residents had garbage on the, the rains this week. So I had some calls as well about the garbage. And I also had a couple of residents reach out about the former Taco Bell site and just the, the former owners or corporate owner maintaining the property, which I do know staff is, you know, been having difficulty with the corporate owners having contact with us and, and maintaining the property. So I do know staff is on, on that and, and trying to keep up with, with the former owners. And then a good compliment is that I had a resident wish to extend a very gracious thank you to our first responders, the ambulance, in particular, the paramedics that assisted her just last week. That they, she said they were very courteous, courteous and very helpful and kind and, and was very grateful. And that's it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Are there any other ward reports? Pretty much engaged by all council members. If there aren't any other ward reports, this would be the time where we would open the floor for public comment. However, there are no signatures on either submission or upon walk-in before 7:30. So that means we're going to move forward to items that are pending. The first one is line item A, ordinance number 20-39, approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there a motion by show of hand to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Budmets, and thank you for the second, Alderman Sanica. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sessi.
Yes.
Yastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. The second line item B, ordinance number 20-40, is to amend it, chapter six, entitled Alcoholic Beverages of the Rolling Meadows Code of Ordinances to prohibit the sale of motor fuel in conjunction with video gaming. By show of hand, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Budmets, and thank you, Alderman Sanica, for the second. Is there any discussion on this by show of hand? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? And will the clerk please call roll?
Yastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Sessi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and an opposed, that ordinance is adopted. This now moves us on to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent ordinances in for first reading. It consists of two items, items C and D. Does any alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for resolutions? Or consent agenda for ordinances, excuse me. Getting ahead of myself. Seeing none, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider these two ordinances in one motion without debate. Can I get that motion? Thank you, Alderman Budmets. Thank you, Alderman Sanica, now, yeah, Alderman Sanica, for the second. First one, ordinance number 20-00 at this time has to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The second ordinance number 20-00 is to authorize the disposal of surplus city property, vehicles and equipment, and information technology or IT hardware. The question is, shall the ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanica.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinances will be moved forward for second reading. This swiftly brings us on to, what is this, new business, which is a motion to approve the payment of bills on warrant for September 22nd, 2020. By show of hand, is there a motion to approve this warrant? Thank you, Alderman Bessesi, and thank you for the second, Alderman Cannon. Is there any discussion on this by show of hand? Alderman Bessesi, I see your hand is raised. Your hand is gone. Okay. Seeing no discussion, seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmatz.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. Moving on here now, the next item is the consent agenda. It's, the next item is the resolutions, excuse me, the consent resolutions. This consists of 10 items. We have items F through O. Is there any alderman wish to remove any of the items from the consent agenda for resolutions? All right, so maybe I'll write down who's pulling which one. Give me a minute. Let's start with Alderman Budmatz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, K and O.
And O. All right. You can lower your hand for now. Alderman Cannon.
Resolution F.
F, the first one for Alderman Cannon. And were there any other hands up that I missed? Okay, if not, then let me just do a quick tally here to make sure I know what's going on, so gee. So that leaves seven on this active consent resolution. The chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the seven resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there a motion? Thank you, Alderman Cannon, and thank you, Alderman Veneziano, for the second. So let's begin with the first one that actually becomes the second one. Item G, resolution number 20-r-92, which is to authorize the purchase replacement computers for the annual computer replacement plan. The next line item H, resolution number 20-r-93, it's to award professional design engineering services contract for the proposed 2021 road resurfacing project. Following that is line item I, resolution number 20-r-94, and that's to award professional design engineering services contract for the proposed 2021 road reconstruction project. Following that is line item J, resolution number 20-r-95, and that's to authorize the replacement of Public Works entry doors at 3900 Birdnik Street. There are a total of four entry doors being authorized in this. The next one being resolution number 20-97, is to authorize the award for contract for 2020 street maintenance pavement restorative seal application, CFR. Following line item L is line item M, which is resolution number 20-r-98, and that's to award a contract for installation of new storm line and inlet to existing city storm manhole located at 2750 Brockway Street. Then lastly, in this batch, line item N, resolution number 20-r-99, is to award a contract for the installation of new storm sewer line and two inlets and connection to an existing city storm manhole at 2300 J Lane. With that, the question is, shall the seven resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmatz.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes. With seven in favor and opposed, those resolutions are adopted. Now, seems that brings us back up to the first letter, F, resolution number 20-9, or 20-r-91, which is to approve the grant agreement with the Salvation Army for COVID-19 relief to city residents. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Thank you, Alderman Sanica, and thank you for the second, Alderman Veneziano. Alderman Cannon, you did pull this, so you have the first opportunity for discussion at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I expressed my thoughts on this earlier. I just don't agree with this, so I won't be voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments up for discussion at this time on this item? If not, will the clerk please call the, oh, you know what, Alderman Diastis, let's see, your hand popped up here.
Thank you. When I was in Jewel this, over the weekend, and all these, I had several residents stop me and ask about this. They all had different reasons, but the ultimate reason was, they didn't want, they don't feel that we should be doing this. So based on their comments and other comments I've heard, I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, you can express that now when the clerk calls roll.
O'Brien.
Yes, sorry, couldn't get to the unmute button. Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Diastis.
No.
Sanica.
Yes.
Cannon.
No.
Budmatz.
Yes.
With five in favor and two opposed, that, that resolution is adopted. Moving on to line item K, resolution number 20-r-96, which is to authorize the replacement of two rooftop and 12-unit heaters at 3900 Birdnik Street Public Works facility. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, and thank you for the second, Alderman Budmatz. Alderman Budmatz, you pulled this, so having given it the second, you're the first to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only reason that I'm pulling this is just to point of information that this is the building that's shared with the Park District. So therefore, we're assuming that we're going to let them use the air conditioning on their side of the building as well, and therefore, we should let them participate in the payment. So normally, or often, when we get a, an item for this building, there's something in the write-up that says that the cost is being shared on some kind of a 66%, 34% split. So when I asked staff about that, they did say, yes, this item also would be sharing that split of shared expense. Of course, we're approving the whole amount, but we can anticipate receiving a reimbursement for the Park District for their proportionate share of the building square footage which they occupy. So that's just a point of information.
Thank you for that point of information. Is there any other comments, discussion, or questions on this particular resolution? Alderman Sanica.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a follow-up to Alderman Budmatz's comment, can Director Horn or Assistant Director Charlton provide us with any reason to not believe that we won't receive that same split of reimbursement in the future?
Gen, excuse me, generally, that will always be the case. It's a 34% split with the Park District. I try to meet with the Director of Parks and Recreation annually to talk about what we have proposed for capital projects that they would have to participate with. But there are some items on occasion, for example, the entry doors that are in the agenda tonight, those would be paid 100% by Park District and 100% by the Public Works Department or City of Rolling Meadows, based on whose door it is. So we try to be good co-tenants and work together on those things. So, yeah, for the most part, most of the things we do in the building are a 34%, 66% split. Is that okay?
Alderman Sanica, does that satisfy your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Director Horn, for that. Any further comments for discussion on this resolution? If not, will the clerk please call the roll?
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmatz.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, that resolution is adopted. This now brings us on to the last resolution, line item O, resolution number 20-r-100, which is to award a contract for purchase and installation of a smoke and fire alarm detection and notification system at 2809 Owl Lane. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Thank you, Alderman Veneziano, and again, Alderman Budmatz, for the second. You pulled it. You're up first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason I pulled this is because there's only one bid. I sent an email to staff asking for clarification or for other bids, and I received no response. So I'm going to make a motion that we receive additional proposals for consideration prior to approving this measure. I, I know a little bit about fire alarms, and as far as it goes for a fire alarm for a home, which we use for commercial purposes, $12,000 is a considerable amount of money for a fire alarm for, given the limited number of devices which are being, which are proposed here. And so if staff needs additional contractors, that they, that they need for recommendations, I'd be happy to furnish them with more. In my line of work, I work with a number of fire alarm contractors who interface with elevators, so I'd be happy to give them those, but I'm not comfortable approving a proposal where only one bid was received and requested. It gives, it may give the bidder the impression that, you know, this is a carte blanche type thing, and, and so I want to make sure that the residents get their best value for their money. So I'm going to make a proposal that we get second, or additional proposals before we approve this, and I'm looking for a second on that.
Thank you, Alderman Budmatz. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Cannon, for the second. Attorney Wolf, I see your hand came up. Feel free to jump in here.
So just for clarification, I think the motion should be expressed as a motion to postpone the matter to allow for the obtaining of additional proposals on this, and, and then we can bring this forward again. And with the, with no date certain, it will come up before the next, for the next meeting of the city council.
I'm happy to re, to restate my motion and ask that it be postponed for the purpose of acquiring additional bids, or proposals, sorry.
And then with that, I'm waiting for a second to come up here, and Alderman Sanica, thank you for the second this time. At this time, is there any discussion on Alderman Budmatz's motion? Alderman Diastis?
Yes, I'd like to hear from Rob Horn why we only invited one participant. If there was some solid evidence, or if he can explain something to us. Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Yes, I, I directed our staff to move forward with this item with, with the knowledge that there was only one proposal received. Our superintendent worked with a contractor that is familiar with the city code requirements. Their initial proposal was $22,000 for this work. Our staff worked with them over the period of about four weeks to make sure what was being proposed was not only code compliant, but also, also was low enough cost that we could bring it in without using just proposals. So it was, it was a calculated risk that I took to do that. But my, my feeling at the time was that if we work with another vendor for a period of time, the amount of money saved, I don't believe will, will come to fruition to, to be significantly different from the one that we got from the person we worked with. So I totally understand, and I do apologize, there were several requests for council items this week, and I did miss getting back to Alderman Budmatz about this, but it was a calculated decision I made, so that, that choice was mine to bring it to the council.
Did you receive more than one bid?
No, sir. We received one proposal from a contractor that was trying to meet code per what our code consultant reviewer for fire alarm and fire sprinkler typically requires. We worked with them fairly extensively to try to pare down the system to meet the bare minimum of what was required by code, and that's, I think Alderman Budmatz indicated, it was about $12,000. So we were able to reduce the cost by about $10,000. But again, we have all that information now, so it shouldn't be hard to, to get an additional proposal for that work, and we certainly can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Alderman Budmatz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And obviously, once we receive an additional proposal, if we have a relationship with a vendor who does the rest of our work and their price is in the ballpark, and we are familiar with their work, and to have unity amongst all of our properties, we would choose to pay a few extra dollars. It's just, it's just nice to know how many dollars extra that we are paying for that, for that privilege when it comes time to, when it comes time to make that decision. So that's really my only, not trying to supplant what we're doing. I just want to make sure that we're paying a fair and just price.
Understood. Understood.
Anything further, Alderman Budmatz?
No, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alderman Diastis, I see your hand is either still up or up again.
Up again, thank you. My question is to Attorney Wolf. If we require additional bids or receive additional bids, and there is another lower bidder that is responsible and comparable, do we not, as a city, have to take the lowest qualified bid?
Oh, thank you. The, I would have to look at the purchasing policies for the city, because this is not a bid as required by necessarily state statute. This is, these are proposals that are being submitted, and it does allow some flexibility on behalf of the city council with respect to who is deemed the most responsible bidder. But we'll make sure that when that information is brought forth to the city council, if there's some, if there is a recommendation not to take the lowest bid, why the other bidder would be deemed, or a proposal, I'm sorry, would be the more, you know, responsible submittal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Alderman Budmatz, I believe this will be your second time here, so it's yours. Unless you didn't have to. Alderman Veneziano, your hand's up. What was yours?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I had recently went over to the property and had some questions for staff in the fact that for some kind of alarm system for the property, i.e. like... i.e. like entry alarm, and was told that that was not in the plan. And kind of looking over the proposal, I'm under the impression that that is not included in this proposal. This is just for smoke and fire. Is that correct Director Horn? I see your head shaking, yes. So, is, and I don't, and I apologize, I don't know much about smoke alarm and detection systems. Is there a way that those two systems would work together from the same company? Or are those two separate identity, two different kind of companies would do that?
If I can, Mayor?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you Alderman Beniziano. We are already efforting proposals for security systems. Our priority was the fire alarm because we wanted to start using the facility for storage. So, to protect that material, there is a, I can't remember exactly what it is called, but a telecommunications component to that that notifies our emergency services if something were to go wrong. So, that was the priority. We have that same superintendent is following up with reviewing security measures to install in the facility as well.
Thank you. And so, follow-up is, would it be, I guess, less expensive to have a company install both, like the same company, or does that not exist?
I can't say whether it exists or not, but we would be using a different company. We'd likely try to use the company that currently supplies maintenance. And we have purchased security systems throughout the other city facilities for, to keep some continuity between the facility and the, the equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Alderman Beniziano. Is there any further discussion on the last of this resolution here? Line item O and the motion that Alderman Bud Matts has made, which we're operating under right now. And if not, then will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Bessassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Tannica.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes, to postpone.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and then opposed, this item is postponed to come back before us the next day with future additional bids. This brings us on to the next point here in the agenda, which happens to be other business and reports. I was hoping to have two appointments by this date today, but the individuals whom I spoke with last week are still taking time to consider. I do appreciate their consideration. They are weighing their time commitments and abilities. So, I will have these appointments at the beginning of the month, next council session in October. So, I don't have the appointments that I was sadly hoping to have today. And I also have no proclamations to make for this evening, but I'm delighted to see we do have a city clerks report. And so with that, Judy?
Yes, we do tonight for once. I just wanted to go over some of the details for the election. That's right around the corner, which is April 6, 2021. We have Aldermen for wards 2, 4, and 6 up for election. Today was the first day that you could start circulating your petitions for signatures. The minimum signatures, I'm going to go with the, the minimum and maximum. Ward 2, no, not less than 18 nor more than 68. Ward 4, not less than 25 nor more than 75. Ward 6, not less than 9 nor more than 59. The filing period for the nomination petitions will be December 14 at 8:00 a.m. to December 21 at 5:00 p.m., but that doesn't include the weekend days. The packet that you should be submitting, the original nominating petitions, statement of candidacy, receipt for filing a statement of economic interest that will be filed with the Cook County Clerk. And that will, that doesn't need to be in your packet, but I need to have the receipt by the close of December 21. And then the loyalty oath is optional. Additionally, packets will not be available at City Hall or in the city, or on the city's website. And city, city staff cannot advise any candidates wishing to run. Candidates can get their, get information and forms online at elections, www.elections-il.gov or get further information at the cookcountyclerk.com. All candidates must comply with Illinois Campaign Financing Act. And finally, this information is not inclusive, inclusive of all election information. It is intended as a guide for those seeking elective office. And that's it for tonight.
Well, thank you. I appreciate hearing the city clerks report. That brings us now to city staff reports. And those city staff reports will begin with the community items of interest. For that, I'll refer to you, Manager Crumstock.
Thank you Mayor and City Council. Obviously, we do have some topics. I do need to add one additional one. And we do want to thank everybody who donated blood drive, blood at the last drive that we did on Thursday, August 27. We do have another one scheduled here at City Hall in the council chambers for Thursday, October 22, between 1:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. And again, due to need of social distancing, appointments are really needed for this event. And you may schedule and contact by talent at 877-258-4825. Wearing face masks are required or face coverings. Walk-ins will only be accommodated if there's availability in the room. And again, there really is a need because many places that used to do blood drives are unable to do them right now, either due to social distancing or they're still closed. The last planned city market for this year, and it's been an interesting year, is scheduled for Saturday, September 26. It's from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the community church, 2720 Kirchhoff Road. The Rolling Meadows marching band will be there for a period of time. Hopefully, they will be joining the market. That is the plan at this point in time. Face covering when we travel and social distancing will all be part of this event. And then there will be a tent for the mayor and city council at this event, too. We do thank Alderman O'Brien, who is actually getting Milo, to make a visit and an appearance at the city market for this event, too. If you have not done so, please take a few minutes out of your day and respond to the U.S. Census survey. Rolling Meadows is still doing a great job. Our response rate is 79.4. It is outpacing the overall state response at 70.4 in Cook County at 66%. These numbers were as of September 15. This is actually the last time that you'll hear about it because the census is scheduled to round up on September 30. We do want to mention again, on Saturday, October 3, Public Works and SWINK will be conducting an electronic and document destruction event from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Public Works Building located at 3900 Burdenix Street. You must be from a SWINK me to participate. Also mentioning, going back to elections, we do have one coming up. Election 2020, make your vote count by mail during early voting or on November 3. Register to vote. If you have recently moved, changed your name, or are a new voter, you will need to register to vote. Obviously, we do mention that registration online by October 18, that's in person or through the mail by October 6. If you miss these deadlines, register to vote during the grace period, which is from October 7 to November 2 on Election Day. Voting by mail, you can vote by mail for the November 3 election. And these ballots can be dropped off at designated mailboxes, mailed by the U.S. Post Office or dropped off in person during early voting hours at the designated locations for those places. Early voting, voting is available at designated Cook County locations. Please visit the Cook County election website for these sites. On Election Day voting, polling places are open from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, November 3. If you have any questions or I went too quickly for voting questions or to obtain a ballot by mail, please visit cookcountyclerk.com or call the clerk's office at 312-603-0906. Obviously, we've been mentioning this and this will be the last time that we mentioned this one, that the second installment of the Cook County property tax bills are out and property owners have until October 1 to pay without any late charges. The second installment was actually due on August 3, but thanks to an ordinance passed back in May by the Cook County Board of Commissioners, the property owners now pay without any interest charges through October 1. I'm going to skip over number 7 because all the masks are actually done. They were all given away for information. We do think the mask that came in from another organization, we distributed about 700 masks throughout City Hall and other locations. Regarding the U.S. Census, we do want to mention that the U.S. Census 2020 takers are walking throughout the community. They still have about a week left that they do. They do have U.S. government IDs and Census 2020 bags. They really only stop at locations that have not completed a census or information needing to be confirmed. We do want to mention again, as we've been saying before, another friendly reminder for residents and businesses. If you're having a hard time paying your utility bill or food and beverage payments, please contact finance at 847-394-8500 or by mail, email, excuse me, at finance@cityrm.org, and they may be able to place you on a payment plan. And again, we have different comments. We have different people. Most people like the new system. We're still obviously dealing with water bills and explaining how the system works. Most people like the history that's out there. And as a reminder, and again, for many residents, they do see their water bill a little bit different. Obviously, homeworking and remote working and kids at home and a really dry summer have affected some of that. Some of that was also when credit cards were eliminated from the old system and then not put into the new system on time. There were double payments that were done. So, you missed one month and then it came up looking a little strange. But again, if you need any assistance, if you want to go over any history, please contact finance between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, 847-394-8500 or through that email address. We do want to mention, and again, please stop dining and ordering in Rolling Meadows. It's more important than ever during these times. It is significant to remember our big boxes, restaurants, and small businesses. We do want to mention this Thursday, September 24, beginning at 4:30, I mean, excuse me, 7:30 p.m. in City Hall Council Chambers, the Planning and Zoning Commission will be conducting a public hearing on recommended revisions of the Rolling Meadows zoning code. Copies of the revisions, draft code, will be available online at www.cityrm.org or at the Community Development Division at City Hall during normal hours from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Residents or businesses who have questions about the proposed zoning code update are welcome to contact Community Development Division Planning Assistant Elizabeth Payne at 847-870-9033 or PayneE@cityrm.org. We do want to mention that we still continue getting a few comments and inquiries. The city did apply, and this is actually the Daily Herald that mentioned it. The city did apply to FEMA. We continue applying to FEMA for relief funds. We did apply to Cook County through the CARES Act, also known as the Corona's Relief Fund. We did submit around $900,000 into the CARES Act, but all that, our allocation by Cook County is allowed at $316,925. It does go through the third party. We worked with them at that point in time. And obviously, the difference between CARES Act and FEMA is quite different. And FEMA, you can keep on actually trying to get some reallocation for that, too. We do want to mention that we do have inquiries continuing about community development, even more inquiries since every time I talk about it, so this might be the last time I talk about it. But obviously, we want to mention to people that over the last four months, they're holding steady for complaints and permits, but slightly higher for some other items, too. Inspections are showing a consistent decrease over the 2019, but this is due mostly to the fact that community development has suspended all non-essential residential inspections this year due to COVID-19. There was also a vacancy due to retirement, but now they're back to full staff. We do want to mention that we did start some weekend duty that you will see an inspector obviously working on certain weekends, too. The other item that I do want to mention is that the Rolling Meadows Police Department and the Drug Enforcement Administration, DEA, has scheduled another National Prescription Drug Takeback Day for Saturday, October 24, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. here at the City Hall parking lot, 3600 Kirchhoff Road. This is a great opportunity for everybody who's been home and you've been finding some additional prescriptions in the house or someone else's house. And if you missed any of our other events or you've not come here to City Hall where we still have a Cook County disposal box here. But it's a great opportunity for any kind of unused prescription drugs or accumulated items that you might have. It is safely disposed through all those kind of pieces. All that you have to do is bring your product and you drop it into a box. So, it's really limitless what you have to do with social distancing and they make it safe and secure. If you want additional informations about the national drug takeback, please contact Chief John Nowacki at 847-394-8500. I also want to mention, which is not on the sheet that you have before you, is that National Night Out, it was usually scheduled for the first Tuesday in August. Obviously, it got postponed. We have scheduled for Tuesday, October 6, 2020. The motto, if you want to call for this year, is "In the Evening to Unite, Turn On Your Porch Light." And we do want to mention to celebrate this unity between the police department and our community, please have your porch light on, if possible, blue light. While supplies last here at the Rolling Meadows Police Department, we have some free bags that we can provide with blue lights and some lawn signs. The bags can be picked up here at the police department desk or you can email rmpd/events@cityrm.org to schedule an officer to drop off. It goes back to what the old National Night Out events used to be, where officers would visit a house or anything else like that. But it's not a big one, but it is celebrating National Night Out 2020. And then again, that is Tuesday, October 6 and coming up. For the last meeting of the month, because we do have a fifth Tuesday of the month, we do want to mention the future topics for the October, other two main committees. Economic Development Committee has decided to move their meeting to Monday, October 5. So, a special meeting announcement will go out. But at that point in time, we have some tentative items to discuss about the schedule for 2020, their meetings and times. It looks like, again, it will be Mondays at 6. We have some business list feedback. We have some other discussions regarding, still looking for a new representative, business advocate update, some other discussions that we have going on that. And again, that one just got changed. It will be posted as a special meeting and following those rules. The Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting on Tuesday, October 6 at 7:30 p.m. Tentatively, there is one item for hearing scheduled, and that pertains to the preliminary approval for the Platte subdivision for consolidation of four lots, dissolution of material services planning development, creation of a cultivating change plan development, and special use to allow an adult-use cannabis craft grower at 3650 Burdenix Street. Laura Lewis, Cultivating Change LLC is the petitioner. And obviously, this would be our first cultivator that would be coming to the city of Rolling Meadows. And that will be coming to the city council at a later date. With those items, I know it was long, but those are items of interest for the end of September.
Thanks, Manager Crumstock. How about the new businesses as of August 2020?
So, the August 2020 list has four that are new businesses. I would like to point out, because of the merger between T-Mobile and Sprint, that's why you see three additional T-Mobile. Those were really all the Sprint locations here in Rolling Meadows. And then obviously, Chicago Paint and Coating at 5105 Tollview Drive moved into the city of Rolling Meadows. We welcome all new businesses, but again, those are the four that came in in August.
Nice. Thank you for that. This will now bring us on to matters not on the agenda. I have one brief matter before we hopefully circle back to earlier on the ward reports. I participated, as I normally do, in the Chamber of Commerce board meetings every month and they happen to fall on the fourth Tuesday. And this morning during our meeting, I was able to receive full board approval to bring the notion of having a basic membership fee be incorporated in our business license or on our business license renewals. I'm not going to get into a lot of this until the committee of the whole in October, which I anticipate this subject being on, and I'll have a full report in details on the who's, what's, when, where's, why's, and most importantly, the house. and most importantly, the house. And at that time, uh, hopefully, there's sufficient information can be gathered, discussed, and we can fit ourselves into an opportunity where, in this current state of COVID nineteen and state of emergency, we're able to better band together and find additional ways that we add value, relevance, and benefits to those businesses that are looking to come to our community. Uh, with that, are there other matters not on the agenda? Alderman Cannon, you can go first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hopefully, my connectivity will hold up today. I want to ask either a question or make a comment. About a year ago, we had a gentleman come before our city council and express a desire to build a couple cell towers in our town. At that time, he had mentioned that it would be multiple thousands of dollars of fees that the city would get, which means our taxpayers wouldn't have to put out more tax money in light of the fact that we're in the process of probably hiring a couple of new people to our staff over and above the normal staff that we have right now. Now, I guess I asked the question is, what do we have to do to pursue getting two cell towers built at our two new fire stations? I don't know what the answer is. I was told I can't pursue it at all in my, in my position. So I don't know what we need to do as a city to get that, make that happen soon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you. Does staff have any feedback? Director Horn, I see your hand is up. If you have answers or assistance with that, feel free. If not, Manager Crumstock, anyone? If, if not, um, then I would ask that staff uh, look into Manager Cannon's request, his inquiry, and hopefully provide some feedback uh, to satiate his questions. Uh, Alderman Veniziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So um, I just wanted to give council um, and residents an update. Uh, last night, the EDC had a special meeting um, uh, for the, for the month. It was our second meeting, um, that we worked on our uh, our temporary name, uh, program of our City Savers um, program. We uh, we had a really great roundtable discussion on uh, phases for the program uh, and what those would look like and, and the goals of, of what this uh, program and marketing plans could be. I, we also met with uh, one potential uh, marketing slash uh, web-based platform designer in town uh, to give us some of their feedback of a platform that currently exists uh, that we, as a committee, could continue to have some discussions with. Uh, we did have a lot of questions for uh, legal counsel to look into. Then, then we could move forward um, to see which way the uh, committee could move forward on, on building our phases out on this, this program so that we could hopefully have this come to council, um, hopefully in the near future. Um, and then at the end of the meeting, we did discuss moving our monthly meetings to Mondays um, at six PM. So that would allow the committee more time uh, in council chambers uh, to meet. Uh, so there was no conflict of time with planning and zoning. Um, and that's about it.
Well, thank you. Sounds uh, sounds like the committee's making uh, progress on the subjects. And it's good that you guys all identified a convenient date and time to continue meeting alternative to what the original date uh, used to be. It's hard to do that with people's schedules these days. Uh, Director Horn, I know I have asked you to be in the hot seat, kind of tongue-in-cheek, and I, I only did that because yours and my conversations a couple of months back. Uh, shoot, it might even be more than a couple of months. But I had brought this question of having canisters for our, our trash incorporated in terms of creating greater efficiencies for our guys on their routes when collecting, uh, also reducing the amount of wear and tear on their physical bodies, um, reducing the cost on our workers' comp premiums, and then overall to the cost savings that it might eventually save through the other aspects of having reduced time, having reduced um, injuries, et cetera, right? And, and logistically helping with the schedule. And so if you could just share with the council uh, some insight on the, the fleet and what they have or what they need in order to, to get this conversation really moving toward uh, reality.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Um, well, I do recall our conversations. Um, and, and you, you're spot on. The, the issues revolve around the cost of the canisters. Um, and a much less cost, but the cost of um, retrofitting our current um, uh, front-load vehicles uh, with what's called a Carrato can that can accept um, the automation required um, for that process. Um, you are correct. Uh, when uh, historically councils have uh, supported um, the mechanical components of that type of system to be installed in the frontline, uh, excuse me, front-load vehicles that we purchase. Um, there will still be an expense for the Carrato can and the arm. Uh, we don't have those parts, but they are much less. Um, I believe, I, I'm guessing, I believe they're about thirty thousand a vehicle, so it would be about ninety thousand dollars for each vehicle to receive those. Uh, the bigger expense is um, the cost to provide everybody a refuse container. Uh, as everyone knows, we are um, about two-thirds of the way through our recycling contract. Um, I, I, I'm hesitant to um, relay uh, further information. Um, city manager, myself, uh, are currently in the process of discussing some alternatives that will address this issue. We have been meeting with our current recycling uh, vendor um, to discuss potential opportunities that we can take advantage of on behalf of the city to um, provide these items. Um, I think it would be um, too soon for me to speak about that right now. I don't think the details are ironed out enough um, to provide to council. Um, but we are very close to getting some information to, to bring back to council for consideration on some ulterior, uh, alternative methods that can uh, potentially solve the, the issue that you raised tonight.
Thank you for that. Um, I think that's more than sufficient for this evening. Uh, other than what we can relay back to residents when the question does come up, uh, Alderman Budmets should feel confident or comfortable then responding by saying that staff is currently exploring initiatives that can, can address and tackle some of these issues or grievances? Is that?
Yeah, absolutely. That's absolutely accurate, Mayor.
All right. Uh, thank you for that.
Mayor, Mayor, uh, my hand was up for a different matter when you're done. Uh, if you could just call on me before you, I'm the meeting.
Uh, I will think about that. But uh, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Um, Alderman Bessessi, floor is yours, and then if that's it, I'll circle back to Director Horn.
Yes, I'll be, I'll be very brief. Uh, as you know, I am the liaison to the library, and I thought I'd give a quick little update on a couple of things. Uh, first off, they, the Finance Committee there is going to come to the City Council. Uh, I know we talked about the levy earlier uh, today. They are looking at actually a negative levy for um, for the next year of uh, over one percent. I believe it's like one point two. Um, but we'll know more about that at our next meeting. I also like to encourage residents uh, to go to um, RMLIB dot org. There's a lot of uh, uh, interesting stuff on that. Uh, the library is still running their programs online for children as well as craft ideas and various other things. Uh, they will also be doing some resurfacing in the very near future on the east parking lot. Uh, but uh, and then the last thing is the library is open right now. Uh, you do need to wear a mask. Uh, it's open from nine to nine on weekdays, nine to five on Saturday, and one to five on Sunday. So I just wanted to give a, a caller for the library. Um, we're still providing a lot of things, and I really do encourage people to go to RMLIB dot org and look at the programs and tools that they have there. And the information you can get very easily from their website. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bessessi. Um, Director Horn, have at it.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I, I certainly don't want to get down in the weeds on this matter um, that you brought up earlier. I just have a, really one question. I, I think it may provoke another one. Um, the business license initiative you're wanting to evaluate, um, is that something you're proposing for the upcoming twenty-twenty-one year? Um, or is that for future?
No, ideally, so full disclosure, the timing of this all is extremely sudden given the climate and current economic status of the chamber um, of the community, of the business community. And so with full disclosure, with the conversation commencing at the Committee of the Whole in October, I would like to make the pressure so that the conversation continues to the next city council meeting. And again, I will request the waiving of the first reading to have it aligned with the distribution of the business licenses that go out, the renewals that go out for November.
Um, o- okay, so, okay, so you're thinking about that. That's fine. Um, my only concern is if there's language, and I'm, and the attorney would have to, would have to weigh in on this. If there's language that would be um, have to be changed, then that would have to be, and that's what you're referring to about the ordinance change. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I have a busy, I have a busy two weeks ahead of me here to make sure that it's all appropriate and available on the Committee of the Whole in October.
Perfect. I ju- I just wanted to make sure I clarified that with you. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you. Uh, any other matters not on the agenda? Um, okay, if not, then you'll also see that there is a request to go into closed session. It does require a motion and a roll call vote under these circumstances. Uh, with that, I would like to ask the question, do I have a motion to go into closed session? Thank you, Alderman Sanica, for the first, and thank you, Alderman Veniziano, for the second. Uh, these two um, items are for personnel of the five ILCS one twenty dash C one of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Um, is there any discussion about these two items going in the closed session? A show of hands. And seeing none, then the next thing is to have the clerk call roll.
Yes, sis.
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veniziano?
Yes.
Bessessi?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the uh, council will now enter into closed session. And to those attendees on the call and the press, if you're out there, be advised that uh, we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session. So with that, I wish you a wonderful evening. And council, I'll meet you on the other conference bridge along with staff, and we'll talk soon. Everyone else, have a wonderful first night of fall, y'all.